I call to order this joint meeting of the Gardner City Council and the Gardner Planning Board on Monday, November 3rd for the purpose of a joint public hearing. The joint hearing notice reads as follows. Pursuant to General Laws 40A subsection 5, notice is hereby given that the City Council and Planning Board will conduct a joint public hearing on Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the City Council Chamber, Room 219, City Hall, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, to consider amending Chapter 675, the zoning code of the city of Gardner. The proposed amendment involves changing items. Item 11688, an ordinance to amend Chapter 675 of the Code of the City of Gardner thereof entitled zoning to allow for the operation and use of cottage kitchens in residential districts within the city of Gardner. Item 11704, an ordinance to amend Chapter 675 of the Code of the City of Gardner thereof entitled zoning to promote housing growth and production in the city. Information regarding these amendments are available for viewing in the City Clerk's office, the Department of Community Development and Planning, DCDP, or the city's webpage, All persons interested in this matter and desire to offer testimony are invited to attend the hearing. TT Seraphin, City Clerk. This is the notice that was also posted on the city website. The clerk will now please do a roll call.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier. Counselor Del Owitz.
Present.
Counselor Harder.
Present.
Counselor He.
Present.
Counselor Haglund.
Present.
Counselor Koziskas.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Tsoumi.
Present.
Counselor Tito Mios.
Present.
President Tyros.
Present.
Mr. Paul Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Steven Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Flint. And Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Quarons for both bodies are present. Tonight we will be entertaining each item separately, beginning with a hearing on item 11688. As a reminder to the Council and Planning Board, I ask that you please hold your questions or comments until after the public has had a chance to get testimony. I now declare open the public hearing for item 11688. An ordinance to amend Chapter 675 of the Code of the City of Gardner thereof entitled zoning to allow for the operation and use of cottage kitchens in residential districts within the city of Gardner. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Please state your name at the podium.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mike Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Gardner, 131 Crestwood Drive. I'd like to thank President Tyros for asking me to join him in proposing this ordinance that's before both of you today. This is something that's come up a couple of times with various constituents who have reached out to us regarding their operations of cottage kitchens in the city. Cottage kitchens are basically home-based kitchens that operate some type of commercial enterprise through the goods that they cook within their home, be it through bakery services, which is nine out of 10 really the calls that we've received on these matters, or any other time that right now, under the current zoning, those home-based commercial kitchens are able to sell retail and do home delivery, but they are not able to have people basically sell out of their homes where they're actually cooking the goods. That's what this ordinance proposes to fix here too, that if someone's looking to or is either looking to or is currently operating a business where they are baking goods at their home and selling it outside of their home, that now they also have the option to sell that in their home as well. This is actually something that we have in several locations operating in the city right now already, that we found out because someone wanted to do the process the right way. Someone came to us in the building department last year and said, "I'm looking to start a cottage kitchen like these other places are doing right now. How do I do that here?" And that business got stunted because they tried to follow the process the right way. And so this is something that we know that there's at least seven of these operating right now in the city that didn't ask and just went with it because they wanted to have their business. And you can't fault someone for trying, especially now in the post-pandemic world where so many people are working from home. It's still working from home, just in a different avenue, in a different venue, in a different environment. So that's what this ordinance is proposing to expand access to in enabling those businesses that are operating out of their home already in legal basis and other avenues to now have this legal basis to operate this in this own avenue and have the basically sell from where they're actually cooking the goods and honestly, in a fresher environment too. So that is the summary of the ordinance that's before you hear. Right now, this would allow it to be in all residential districts of the city, so single-family residential one, rural residential two, and general residential three districts. This does not include it in the commercial one, commercial two, industrial one, industrial two, mainly just to be able to start us off having something where we can operate these types of enterprises in people's homes where people's homes are. We do have residences that are located in the commercial and industrial districts, but this is really just the first step to see how we, where we could be and how many people are going to be involved in this and follow the process if we allow cottage kitchens in the residential neighborhoods of the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition of the proposed zoning amendment? At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any questions from counselors or Planning Board members?
Counselor Tsoumi. Yes, I do have a question. Are there? And I apologize, I don't have the full detail. I know that's in front of me right here, right now. But are there any restrictions from what can be from? I don't know. Who am I directing?
We'll ask Mayor Nixon to come back.
Restrictions from what can be sold from these home-based, you know, home businesses?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor. That's a good question. All of the, I should say with both of the zoning ordinances that you have before you hear this evening, all aspects of the state building code and state sanitary code do still apply for those businesses or operations or construction or anything like that. So for instance, in this case, are there restrictions on what they can sell out of their home? Yes, and that's all outlined in the state sanitary code. In terms of space, in terms of equipment, in terms of if you sell certain goods, you need three-bay sinks with hot water. If you sell certain goods, then you need a grease trap or a hood or something like that. All of those aspects of the building and sanitary codes would still apply. Really, it kind of limits it to any age baked goods that could be sold out of these.
Okay. President Tyros, a follow-up question. And so these kitchens are subject to Florida health inspection on how many times? Once per year?
Once, what? Go ahead. Once per year per their health permit. So they are required to be fully permitted as well from the Health Department. So we have it documented, this is the layout, this is what they're cooking and stuff like that too.
Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Counselor Tsoumi. The second question is the same as mine, one of mine, but my other question is, these people who operate these cottage kitchen bakeries would be required to be serve-safe?
Yes. Serve-safe, allergen-safe, again, all of the things that you would require for a regular health permit would carry for these.
Any further questions or comments on the matter? Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed on item 11688. I now declare the public hearing open for item 11704. An ordinance to amend Chapter 675 of the Code of the City of Gardner thereof entitled zoning to promote housing growth and production in the city. Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mike Nicholson, Mayor of the City, 131 Crestwood Drive. To the members of the Planning Board and the Council, you do have a packet of information in front of you. I want you to know that there's a lot more data and information in the packet here that's not in the presentation, so in the interest of time, that's there for you. I'd want to reiterate, my office is available for questions. If you have questions on that data, after you review that later on. But in the interest of time for this evening, I just want to make sure you had it there, but it may not be something that's in full detail in the presentation that I have. I'd also like to thank Counselor Harder for asking me to join her in proposing this ordinance as well. This ordinance began really in conversations we had after the State of the City address, where one of the things that I pointed out was that we're seeing a supply and demand issue in an Econ 101 situation, where we're seeing a massive increase in demand for housing here in Gardner, but the stock and the supply of housing has really remained stagnant, if not lowered, over the last several decades here in Gardner. So that's one of the things, how can we promote housing growth and production of any kind to make sure that we remain affordable in our cost of housing, but also are combating the housing crisis for which Gardner is no stranger for, for what Massachusetts is dealing with. But to better illustrate the supply and demand issue on a very quick basis, again, there's more data in the packet here. This is Gardner's population from 1980 to present. We've seen an 18.92% increase in our overall population here in Gardner during the same time period. Our population back in 1980 was 17,900. We're currently at 21,287. During the same period, the Department of Public Health also tracks the number of births that we have of residents here in Gardner. I want to say that this does not count residents of other communities that are born at Haywood Hospital. Those are counted in the home report, so if someone from Hubbardston comes to Haywood, they are not counted in these numbers. We've seen a 29% increase in the number of residential births that we've had here in the city, with a big jump happening between 2017 and 2018, where we saw an increase of about 200 babies that year. But overall, the smooth outline is about 29%. But when you take into account our natural population growth that we've seen, because the Department of Public Health also tracks the number of resident deaths that we've had in the year, this is the trend that we've seen. So the orange line is the natural deaths that we've had here in the city, and the blue lines are the new resident births that we've had here in the city. And by and large, except for that large jump that we saw in 2017, 2018, there's not that much of a gap. But the demand can be seen that we're seeing for housing in that this graph of our natural population growth that we're seeing, when you compare births to deaths, looks a lot different than this graph that we're seeing from population as a whole. And we're also seeing that our population is getting older. You'll see that the num, the orange is population over the age of 18, the blue is population under the age of 18. Normally, we like to break this out with a 20 to 40-year range in between. However, the website and the information for the U.S. Census Bureau is currently not available online due to the current federal government shutdown, so this is the best that we were able to do. But you can see that the blue has gone down consistently, where the orange has taken an increased level of the share as well. While we're talking about population and housing, just so you can see the median home income for 2010 to 2013, which is the latest year that we've had data here in Gardner, this is in year-to-year dollars, when adjusted for inflation. This is the graph that shows median home income in the city when adjusted going back to 2010 numbers. So comparing what our purchase power would be now for the average amount of median home income back in 2010 numbers. So then getting into how this relates to our housing itself, we mainly have a very slight advantage in single-family units here in Gardner. 51% of our housing stock is single-family, 48% is multifamily. Others is things like ADUs and stuff like that, that people could live in that aren't in your typical categories in one or the other. Our number of housing units that are vacant has also gone down. We saw a 5% decrease in the last year of the number of vacant units that we have in the city. And these are considered vacant if they've been vacant for more than a 12-month period, is what the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, which provides this data to us, shows that. And we also know that 57% of our homes in the city of Gardner, and that's any residential housing unit, are owner-occupied, with the remaining 43 are renter-occupied, just to give a kind of breakdown. And then our housing ownership rate in that has also shifted. We were higher in the 1970s for owners versus rent. That's really just showing that more people are renting now in Gardner than fully owning the residential properties that they live in, in the years that we have here. And again, 10-year gaps because it's the federal census. However, where I've seen the most interesting data myself in going into this, after Counselor Harder and I talked, is these are the number of new construction units that have happened from the period of 2005 to present, based off of building permit data that we have here in the city. We've seen not only a reduction in the number of single-family housing units that are being newly constructed in Gardner, but if you look, we haven't constructed a single multifamily housing unit, new construction in Gardner since 2009. All other multifamily construction that we've seen in Gardner that's happened recently has been renovations to existing structures, not actual new construction. And that's again illustrated here, so you can just see the difference between year-to-year in a different format. For renovations that we've seen, these are the permits that we've had for alterations to buildings, this could be conversions to multifamilies, these could be additions, these could be anything that really falls into the new growth category that we have. So you can see even our alterations, renovations, repurposings, and things like that have also significantly decreased in the same time period that we're looking at here, just to get data for it. And the reason why we looked at 2005 to present is so that we could capture the recession and see if there, we were building, still in a period where we're building back up from where the recession happened and the housing market bubbled, or if we were still on a similar trend than we were before that. And as you can see, before the recession started, or before the recession hit in 2008, we've still been on that downward cycle that was there. The, this is provided just so you can see some data from 2018 to present on median sale price versus median list price, so you can see the difference between the sale and the listing price that comes into play in a little bit. But just so, to be able to show the number of single-family homes in Gardner that have sold each year from 2015 to present, this graph shows that here. But again, this only shows in the last 10 years how housing has sold here in Gardner. We've seen a lot of sales that we feel like, oh, this is a big market that we have here, housing's on the market, you know, day after day, it's a competitive market, and it is. But just because a house is on the market for a day or two doesn't mean that there's enough housing on the market for that day or two, and that's why it's there for the day or two. And to illustrate this even more, we went back to that 2005 year, and this is our housing market for the number of homes sold every year in Gardner since 2005. And if you look at the data, we're at the same level of housing on the market right now as we were in 2010, when we were just building back out of the housing bubble recession. So we're really seeing our housing stocks going down, and we're kind of trending back to where we were in the time of the recession for when this was going. And this can even be seen here on the rolling five-year average. I'm going to skip the next slides because those are data based on the two charts that we saw before, and get to this slide here with the single-family home price that's there. Why this is important here is our valuations in the city for the purpose of taxation that a lot of people use to determine whether or not how appraisals are going, are based off of how these sale prices went two calendar years prior. So these prices here that you can see are very different than the housing stock graphs that we saw earlier, that these have relatively gone up recently, do play a fact in when we're going for not only our tax rate, but valuations for properties, the way that we build our budget here in the city. So there's a financial impact to us here and the work that we do, but also a financial impact for our residents and what they're seeing in their tax bill and their properties, whether they look to sell, whether they look to remove, whether they look to remodel, renovate, and things of that nature. But by and large, our sale-to-list price has been pretty consistent over the last five years, pretty flat, as you see in the graph there too. This is the reference, so you had that if you'd like to go back as to how we go back two years for the purpose of taxation. And where this relates to our valuations, we recently saw this breakdown here of how 85% of the properties in Gardner are considered residential properties, with 7% commercial, 4% industrial, and 4% personal property. That bakes up our full tax base that we have here in the city. Residential valuation here in Gardner has seen 102% increase from 2019 to present, based off of those sale trends that we've seen. And again, when you go back two years and you see that the housing stock has gone down, but the demand has gone up, this is where this plays a factor, by these valuations going up as much as they do. And it's not just in our, you know, one particular aspect of our residential properties. For the third year in a row, our two families and our three families and condominiums saw the biggest increases in valuations that we saw based off of those sale trends. For the average single-family home, the average in valuation increase from 2019 to present was about 92%. For the multifamily properties that we have here in the city, we're looking at 139, almost 140% increase, again, from 2019 to present in valuations based off of sale values. And these are our rents for average here in Gardner. I want to say that these rent data comes from the multiple listing service, and that there are some landlords who don't list their apartments on the multiple listing service, but use things like Facebook Marketplace, or word-of-mouth, or their own websites, or newspaper ads, or anything like that. But this is the only data that we can pull together ourselves. So for single-family homes in Gardner, valuations have in, the, excuse me, the sale price of single-family homes in Gardner has increased by about 72%. For a one-bedroom apartment, rent has increased from 2000, that's too small for my eyes even, from 2005 to present, that's what these numbers are here. A single-family, excuse me, a one-bedroom apartment has seen a 104% increase in rent in Gardner in the last 20 years, a two-bedroom, 104% increase in rent, and a three-bedroom, a 94%, excuse me, 92% increase in rent in Gardner. And I understand not every single-family home is the same as any other single-family home, so we also broke that data down by bedroom. A one-bedroom increased by about 114%, a two-bedroom by 72%, a three-bedroom by 68%, four-bedroom by 77%, and a five-bedroom by almost 100%, 99.38% in valuation, just over the last two years, excuse me, 20 years. And that's based off of a look back on how the real estate market was trending two years prior, with that affecting everything here. So long and short, is that the demand has increased, the housing stock has really remained the same, if not level, if not decreased. So what we're looking at doing through this ordinance is finding ways to combat that issue that we have here. The statutory authority for everything that's in this ordinance here is all listed, so you can go back and reference this. But again, as I said earlier, every aspect of the building code and state sanitary code does apply to this. The state sanitary code does state minimum square footage per individual that's allowed to live there, basically for occupancy load of the location, and then the building code sets everything else in terms of construction. So to do a quick breakthrough here, the short title, that's just so we understand that, really, the purpose behind it. Section 2 talks about what we call small homes in the ordinance, what many refer to in colloquial talk as tiny homes. This is something that's newly allowed here in Massachusetts under the latest revision of the building code. It's something that we need to adopt as a part of that because it is now part of the building code, so it is something that we need to incorporate in some way. But this allows it to be put in residential districts. These are allowed for up to 10 units per acre, so they're a lot smaller. And the average selling rate right now of a tiny home in Massachusetts is around $130,000 to $150,000, as compared to right now our average single-family home value in Gardner is around 350,000, 375,000. And that's again, average single-family home value, not sale price. Sale price, we're looking closer to $515,000 for a single-family home right now in Gardner. The next section that talks about this is the accessory dwelling units. I do want to note that the Welfare Committee of the City Council did vote to amend this proposal to increase the maximum, excuse me, the maximum square footage from 900 square feet to 1,250 square feet. So that would have to be taken into effect, but this was written before that amendment was made at the Welfare Committee meeting. This applies the law that was recently signed into law by Governor Haley, known as the Affordable Homes Act, that we are required and mandated to put into our zoning somewhere that allows accessory dwelling units, formerly known as in-law apartments, either detached or attached, to be allowed in all residential districts within the Commonwealth, not just here in the city. The only change that's not the same from the Affordable Homes Act to this is that increase to 1,250 square feet from the state's minimum, excuse, the state's allowable 900 square feet. We can be more relaxed than the state, we just can't be more strict than what the state has. So we can't go to 800, but we could go to the 1,250. The next section allows for expedited permitting for all housing projects here in the city, with a 90-day turnaround for all housing projects, or if it's a veterans' preference housing, which is defined as at least 5% of a project being veterans' preference for the sale of those properties or the rent of those properties, they'd be a more expedited timeline. This is something that we received actually from the Secretary of Veterans Services as part of the state's new pledge to end veterans homelessness in the city, that the city's looking to be a part of. I do want to flag for the Council and the members of the Planning Board, though, that there are some ways that this may need some review within the next couple of weeks. Governor Haley has recently announced that she has ordered the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to, this is new to us recently, the announcement was originally made, but we've just seen the draft regulations within the last three days, that she's asked the Housing and Livable Communities Secretariat to issue regulations that any housing project of over certain size would require a 30-day turnaround in permits and not the 90-day that we have. But why it's still important to include what we've proposed in the ordinance is that you need a certain number of units for this, and it's a quite substantial amount of units. There's acreage requirements, there's other things with that, so this would apply to some larger developments, but what we are proposing is that for any housing development, it'd be a 90-day turnaround, mainly because time is money. And if there's someone who's got an architect, a contractor, or things like that, and they want to get the project going, the longer we spend on the permitting time, the less time that they have in opportunity costs, and also longer-term costs if a contractor goes off the job to do something else because they're waiting for that project to get done. We want to make sure we're being as productive as we can in our permitting process. Section 5 talks about a starter home overlay. This is basically the in-between between a tiny home and a single-family home. So this is a more medium-sized house, mainly for younger families, mainly for people who are recent college graduates, looking to get out on their own, first-time home buyers, so that they can afford something a little better. What we're seeing right now is a trend here in Gardner, is that a lot of people who were looking to downsize as they got older are staying in the larger homes that they had, mothballing their upper floors, and treating a multi-story residential property as if it was a ranch, because they, there is no other place for them to go to downsize. And what that does, it not only allows them that they can't downsize, but it also makes it so that it doesn't free up that single-family home from the housing market, and that's a trend that we've consistently seen and why those numbers are going down over the year. So this is all trying to put something in the in-between. Just because it says starter, doesn't mean it has to be a starter. It's mainly a mid-sized home for someone who doesn't have a full-size family, doesn't need all the amenities of a larger multi-story house, to have that kind of in-between. The next would create a multifamily-by-right zone in certain areas of the city, based on those requirements that you see there for the development standards. This is something that, there is actually a map of where we're proposing that this be put, but for the starter homes in this, it allows us to later on go create overlays. It doesn't set citywide parameters for these, and I want to make that very clear. We're not changing the zoning for where people live. These two options, the starter homes and the multifamily by right, create overlays, so that the underlying zoning is the same. If there's a commercial property that's there and it's overlaid there, it's still a commercial property. It doesn't lose its zoning, but it creates an opportunity that if someone wants to do something later on, they're not tied to just that one specific use. If someone has a single-family home in an area that's in this overlay, they can keep it as a single-family home for as long as they want and have no issue with it. It adds an extra option on for our residents to have for that. But what it also does, it allows greater flexibility with people who are looking to repurpose existing multifamily units. I use the example in the Welfare Committee, that there's certain areas of the city right now that, because of vacancies of over two years, certain multifamily properties are now considered single-family properties because of their zoning designations. And what that does, it creates extra red tape in terms of going back to get that rezoned as a multifamily unit, extra costs in terms of construction standards. And again, when time is money, you're probably looking at adding anywhere between $5,000 to $15,000 onto the project because of the, I'm sure, we'll hear you later about how much more that could be too, because you have to get lawyers involved and everything like that when you go through these processes here. So this basically allows, in the multifamily areas of the city, to remain multifamilies and keep the character of the neighborhoods that are actually already there, and provide also for the housing issues that we're seeing. A couple of the next sections are based off of feedback we've received from developers. We had a housing developer roundtable earlier in the year, and this is kind of feedback we received from that. Right now, the ordinance has one unit per bedroom for residential parking requirements. This reduces it to one parking space per dwelling unit to create more greater flexibility. The next section of that also says that if there's not enough property on the location itself to allow for those parking requirements to be met, the partnership agreement can be signed between the owner of the residential property and another property, so basically can have an off-site parking lot within 1100-foot radius of the building, that people can walk to back and forth, but still have a place to store their cars off the street. This, Section 9 and Section 10 are related to each other, so I'm going to go to Section 10 to explain Section 9. Right now, the current ordinance says that in all commercial one districts of the city, if you're changing the upper floors, if you're not adding floors to the building that you're changing its use for, you don't have to add additional parking requirements. We're seeing this downtown with a lot of the buildings that had commercial on the upper floors and office space on, excuse me, commercial on the bottom floors, office space on the upper floors, that they're not having to add additional parking, even though they're adding residential units in the upper floors through mainly apartments, because it's not adding floors to the building itself. And it was mainly to recognize the substantial cost that would have to go in to adding parking locations to buildings that have really been here for sometimes 100 years, sometimes 20 years, sometimes 50 years, and in between. So what these two sections do, Section 9 and Section 10, would make it so that that same flexibility would not just exist in commercial one, but in all commercial and industrial zones in the city. So that if there is a property that some of it's being converted to housing from a commercial or industrial use, that they don't have to add additional parking onsite than what was originally approved in the So that if there is a property that some of it's being converted to, uh, housing from a commercial or industrial use, that they don't have to add additional parking onsite than what was originally approved in their site plan approval that was done before that, basically extending what we've done in the downtown for, since I think it was 1972 that that ordinance was adopted originally. Um, this is new, it's part of the new, uh, building code, uh, so we wanted to codify that in if we could, allowing for compact car spaces with, uh, increased people and are looking to purchase electric vehicles here in Massachusetts, uh, compact cars to save on gas or other things like that. It would allow up to 40% of the spaces in these units to be designated as compact cars. This would still require site plan approval, site plan review and all of that that goes there, but it allows the option of up to those 40 to be available for compact cars with signage and all the, uh, basic other requirements that are there. Uh, the next couple of sections take what we just talked about and put them into the tables of uses. Uh, so the parking design requirements, uh, this one here, uh, goes to the diagram that's in the ordinance that says all parking has to be behind the residential properties. This allows for greater flexibility, uh, and where the parking is located. Uh, the next section allows for the buffer and the setbacks, uh, for where the parking is located. It basically takes into account that a lot of the places that we're looking at, particularly with our multifamily by right zone, uh, on a lot smaller lots than what we currently allow for new construction. So this is recognizing that in those smaller areas where construction already exists, that they'd have certain other requirements to fit, uh, their parking on the lots that they currently have. Uh, snow storage, uh, basically changing it to adequate provisions for snow removal. This is something that again would still require site plan approval and site plan review, just allowing greater flexibility as to where the snow may be stored. Uh, rather than right now, we have a prohibition that snow can't be, uh, stored on any area that's landscaped on the property. Uh, the next section, uh, we currently require, uh, under the ordinance that all multifamily units must be annually inspected by the building department. Uh, this is allowing some greater flexibility that if the building is a multifamily that's owner-occupied, but five or under units. So we're not talking about the major units that have, you know, several, sometimes dozens of apartment units there. Uh, we want to make sure that those are staying safe. But what this would do is free up some time of our, uh, building department a little bit by sending them annually the safety standards so that they review those with their tenants, rather than having to go through a full inspection, uh, of the building if it's an owner-occupied building. If it's a non-owner-occupied building and it's a fully 100% outside rent, they would still be subject to those annual inspections that are required by law. And again, the next couple of sections, put these into the tables of uses. This puts the, the sections one through five into the table of uses. This puts the lot requirements and the parking requirements also into the table of dimensional requirements. Uh, and then section 18 establishes where the multifamily by right district would be in the city, and this is what we are proposing through this ordinance. It basically follows the freight track lines, uh, along, um, Route 2, uh, Chestnut Street, uh, just behind, uh, Chestnut Street, Charmin Street, Main Central, uh, down through Park Street, uh, and using Puffers Pond and Douglas Road as fair, it's basically the outside area that's there. So again, I do want to emphasize this is an overlay. Whatever, uh, districts are there, because there are very various, uh, commercial, industrial, single-family and, uh, general fam- uh, general residential zones within this district, all of those will stay. What this does, it allows those property owners, again, the extra option that if they're ever looking to sell, remodel, or, uh, renovate their properties, they have greater flexibility to be able to do so within those districts. And you'll notice that in for, I'd say 85 to 90% of this proposed district is already built out in multifamily. So this would really just be for helping people renovate those multifamily, uh, units that are already there to try to spruce them up without having to go through the costs that are associated there. Um, so in long and short, uh, that is the information that's there. Uh, in your packets is the raw numbers data, so you can see those if you'd like to see the actual numbers that are there. Uh, but this is really us just trying to address the housing crisis that we've seen, uh, really try to get the supply back up to meet the demand that's there. Uh, based off of our preliminary studies that we've been working with, the city of Gardner is for our current housing demand that we're seeing and people who are looking to either move to Gardner or stay in Gardner after they leave their parents' house. We're about 750 housing units short to meet the current demand that we're seeing. Not the demand five years from now, 10 years from now, but right now in 2025. Um, so this is something that hopefully will allow some options to alleviate that as we move forward to the future. Uh, and I'm happy to take any questions later on from the members of the council of planning board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Nixon. Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Please come up, state your name and address at the podium, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm John Babaci from Cando Realty. Uh, we have an office at 88 Main Street here in Gardner. Um, I'd like to speak in favor of the proposed, um, I'll be, I'll be a little bit honest. Like, we've benefited a lot from the lack of housing supply here in the city of Gardner. We own quite a bit of residential units in the areas that were outlined, and rents have gone up exponentially over the last four years that we've been in the city. Um, we do a lot of projects in the city of Gardner, but we have said no to a lot of projects over the years, frankly, due to a lot of the reasons that are being proposed to change. Parking's a big problem, a lot of the, the sites that we look at. Um, setbacks are a big problem with a lot of the sites that we look at. And honestly, when we rent out units, most of the time, you know, it's more likely that our residents have zero cars than two cars. Um, we've done surveys, we've, we've met with tenants, and every time we lease units, most of the time it comes with a deeded space or two-deeded spaces or zero spaces. And that allows us to adjust the rents up or down based off of what's available, and it gives the residents the choice of which buildings they want to move into. I think a lot of these changes will make, uh, like, the development of the, the tree streets a lot more favorable. Um, there's been a lot of projects over the years that we've just walked away from because the rules are, are too firm and it's not worth the time, the energy, the zoning, the attorneys in order to get it through. And so I think a lot of these changes will make, you know, more projects feasible in the area. And then, you know, a little bit against us, but more housing units means rents will go down. That'll hurt us a little bit in the short term, but we believe that Gardner is, is ready for more growth. And I think more housing units are, are welcome supply to everything that's going on in the city. I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment?
Jason Stevens, Director of Community Development and Planning. I've been here for just about 10 months now in this position, which is hard to believe, since my first day was spent also here at this podium in front of city council. One of the things I want to make sure that is well-known is that for any resident or developer looking to build in Gardner, I'm, or I should say, me and my assistant are the first basis that they see, uh, when submitting for anything in front of the planning board. Um, we hear from residents as well for anyone who's looking to purchase a home, to find a home for rent in Gardner, uh, who are looking to learn about new developments, uh, for, um, senior housing, affordable housing, um, any small home developments, if those are in the pipeline. I think even once or twice, my assistant has sat down with residents and actually went through listings for apartments to find them a potential fit for a home in Gardner. So the need is there if we are seeing that in my department, if we are encountering people who are looking for homes and coming to us for help. So I just wanted to say that as, you know, my perspective in terms of, uh, in favor of this amendment, um, just hearing from all those residents over the past 10 months in terms of their needs and hopefully this being a great first step in terms of meeting the needs of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in favor of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition to the proposed zoning amendment? Please state your name and address to the record.
My name is Phil Gransowitz, 14 Laurel Lane in Princeton, Mass. Um, I am a part-owner of a large parcel of land in Gardner, along with my brother and sister that we inherited from my, my parents. Um, I had some questions and concerns with this proposal, um, with regards to the overlay district, how it was drawn, why those boundaries existed. Um, our parcel is 1.3 acres in a very, in a residential area. It's zoned for residential one. Um, I have concerns as to what property rights, um, we don't have by not being in an overlay zone. The overlay zone completely goes north of Route 2. Nothing in South Gardner, nothing below Route 2. Um, this area has multifamily buildings there, along with some single-family units. I don't see that it's any different than the areas that you've designated in these overlay zones. Um, I would like somebody on the planning commission to speak to why the overlay zones exist the way they do now and what the opposition is to extending them into South Gardner. Because if you're truly interested in expanding the housing stock, um, you know, why not expand it to everybody in the town? Um, I think it's, it's important. I fundamentally agree with this, but I do have some issues with the arbitrary zones that have been, overlay zones that have been drawn. Um, so I would ask for some clarification with regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition of the proposed zoning amendment? Does anyone wish to be heard in opposition to the proposed zoning amendment? Are there any questions or comments from the council or planning board? Council Mack?
Um, I just want to reinforce what the, um, gentleman who was just at the podium said. Because as I, I look closely at this map, I mean, originally, um, you know, I noticed, uh, you know, Oakham, Vernon, Abbott Park, I mean, there's, there's a lot of multifamily homes in that area as well as if you go, um, you know, towards Chestnut and Elm. So I, I just kind of have the same question as why the overlay district is so limited, um, in this proposal because I think it could benefit, um, a lot more residents to increase it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Nixon, would you like to answer the questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, thank you very much, councillor, and to the gentleman who asked the question earlier as well. Uh, the reason where this overlay, uh, was chosen was mainly because it's the highest concentration of multifamily units that are currently existing that we have right now in the city. Uh, working with the city's assessor and GIS coordinator, we mapped out the difference in housing stock that we have versus, uh, single-family, two-family, multifamily condominiums and, um, one other designation that I don't remember off the top of my head. Uh, but this area of the city that you see highlighted before, you have the greatest concentration. Uh, and the boundaries that are, we, we have to set in order to avoid issues of spot zoning, uh, go along with natural boundaries that exist. So for instance, a street break, a, um, so the Route 2 bypass being a, a natural street break that we have, a railroad thing. Um, to be honest, if this got expanded, I'd have no opposition to it. If this went into South Gardner, I'd have no opposition to it. If this went further up north into the Chestnut and Elm, I wouldn't have any opposition to it. I think there's other areas of growth that you said and has been said earlier too, that multifamily units do exist and other opportunities do exist elsewhere. Uh, this was really just, we were focusing on where we saw not only the greatest number of multifamily housings, but also the number of vacancies in those units to see if there was a way to be able to stimulate the renovation of, uh, of those properties to get them back into full use right now where they'd lost their grandfather in prior and had to be treated as a single-family home and go through the full process with that. Uh, but if this was to expand or be, um, added as a second overlay that are not contiguous but in a different area of the city or anything like that, I think it accomplishes the same goal in the end. A real, like I said, the, the idea that we had going into this was focusing on where do they currently exist, coupled with where are the greatest number of vacancies in those, that existing area and that heat map that we had, if you will. Uh, so that's really why we looked into that. But it's again, for any of those things, nothing that I would be opposed to. Uh, and to answer the question that was asked earlier, uh, what rights are there without the overlay that's there? Um, if you go through the table of uses and the zoning requirements, it says based on the zones that you live in, you're allowed these items in this area, you're allowed these items by special permit in the same area, or you are prohibited from doing that with your property in that based off of whatever zoning district that you're in. And right now, if you wanted to do a multifamily unit and you are in an area zoned for single-family, uh, you require various, uh, relief from zoning, uh, through a special permit from the planning board, uh, and then some additional requirements in front of the zoning board of appeals as well. Uh, those can lead, when you get into, uh, not so much the planning board requirements, that's more the easier process, but when you get in front of the zoning board of appeals, that could be closer to $50,000 to $75,000 in added cost onto the product when you're dealing with attorney's fees, processes, mailings and everything else that goes there too. Uh, but, so as I said in the presentation, what adding an overlay does is add an option. So if you have a piece of property and you say, I really just want this to be single, a single-family home and that's all I want to do with it, you have that right because the underlying zoning in that neighborhood is single-family residential. And that, you can keep it there and do whatever you want with it. But if you wanted to say, you know what, it's, it's land, I want to build a multifamily unit, maybe have three units, rent it out, or maybe do a single-family, maybe you have a single-family home and you'd like to, you know, add an addition onto it, and now it's a two-family, you'd be prohibited from doing that into the current zoning, where this would allow you to do that with greater flexibility. Now prohibitive, again, being that there are appeal processes and special permit processes and things of that nature that you could go through, but there are time and there are money. So this is really just trying to make it easier for people to have the option to go through those. Nothing is being forced on anyone, nothing is being taken away from anyone. We're simply just adding the option so that you can do something extra if you choose to do so with your property in the long term.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any further comments or questions? Council Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I understand the reason for this proposed zoning ordinance. It's tied to the zoning changes being required from the state and seeks to address issues of housing availability and affordability. At first, I was leery about how this ordinance would change the city by allowing denser residential development in single-family residential neighborhoods, like the one I live in. As I thought about it, I began to realize that the neighborhood I grew up in is actually rather diverse. I live on Elm Street, across from the Big Chair, across from the Elm Street School. As a child, the Franklin House, two doors down, had an in-law apartment where Irene Diamond lived. Two houses up the street were the Weeks', and they rented out some rooms to Ms. Clashine and Ms. Beets, who were teachers at Gardner High School. Behind me on Chestnut Street was a house converted to a two-family, and two houses further up Chestnut Street was an apartment house where Ms. Aldrich and Ms. Sutherland, two other Gardner High School teachers, lived. So I guess what is being proposed here for housing makes sense. My concern with the current proposal has to do with parking requirements, an issue that I understand has become a little difficult for the zoning board. This ordinance seems to be easing the parking space requirements within the zoning ordinance. For example, section two, small homes, requires one space per three units. Section three, accessory dwelling units, requires one space only if located more than one-half mile from a transit stop. And section seven changes from one space for one bedroom and two spaces if two or more bedrooms to one space per dwelling unit. I did a little research on Gardner over the past 50 years regarding vehicles and population. I guess most of us understand that the population in Gardner has hovered around 20,000 people for the past 125 years. While the population has been spreading out from, away from the center of town, it has not gotten particularly bigger. However, if we look at the number of vehicles today compared to 50 years ago, the story is much different. In 1975, which was 50 years ago, the city had about 8,500 vehicles. Today, there are about 20,200, almost one vehicle per resident. Where are those vehicles parking? And if the population expands, where will, will those new vehicles park? Parking becomes a special problem during snow emergencies when the on-street parking ban goes into effect. Will these changes mean that the city is going to have to develop, build, and maintain more public parking spaces? Will the demand for public parking spaces be spread across the city rather than be concentrated in a downtown area? Should we be requiring parking, more parking spaces from property owners who are expanding their rental units and thereby their business? Alas, I do not have an answer to my questions. If this ordinance were related to city finances, I would dive in and propose a solution. So instead, I will defer to the experts and ask the planning board and the community development department and the mayor to... ask the planning board and the community development department and the mayor to review once more the changes to the parking requirements and study the consequences of what we are doing. Maybe we need to make some adjustments to the ordinance. Maybe we need to make plans for more public parking that is convenient to more varied neighborhoods. And maybe it's not an issue at all. As we move forward, I just want us to do so with eyes open. I want us to be proactive and not reactive. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Thank you, President Tyros. I first want to thank Counselor Harder and Mayor Nixon for bringing this proposed zoning amendment forward. Someone who grew up in rental housing and who has done a lot of door knocking in neighborhoods with large amounts of rental stock in tri-city area, this proposed change in zoning is certainly a breath of fresh air to me. I've seen the current rental housing conditions firsthand. What is currently considered affordable in this area are some of the least well-maintained properties out there. Second, as someone who has a daughter who is fresh out of college, living at home, working a full-time job, and making the same amount annually that I made fresh out of college twenty-six years ago, and meeting at least a half a dozen other constituents who are in the same position, something really has to give, especially if we want to keep our kids to continue living in Gardner. It is about time that we start addressing the current housing affordability crisis head-on and bring some affordable quality housing options, both for first-time homeowner and quality affordable rental housing online. We need housing developments in Gardner, not just for the people that we want to move here who can afford a market-rate house, housing, but for the people who currently live in Gardner so they can continue to live in Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Munoz. Any further counsel comments or remarks? Counselor Harder?
This is about a year in the making. It started when I noticed an apartment in my neighborhood, after sitting for many years abandoned, had been bought by new owners and clearly were putting a lot of money into this. What I didn't understand was, after it appeared to be done, why it continued to sit vacant. I asked and was told it needed a zoning variance because it lost its grandfather as a multifamily because it was vacant for so long and now needed a special permit. To be clear, this was not new construction. It was not a conversion. For probably a hundred years, I had been in that same spot as a multifamily house, but because of our rules, the new owner, who had already put quite a lot of money into it, had to go through this process and incur more expenses. Looking around my neighborhood, I noticed other issues like this with similar properties, and much of that has been incorporated into this ordinance. Housing is expensive. Building new housing is more expensive. Across my ward has been a slog renovating multifamily houses, some of which have been vacant for more than ten years, some more than twenty years. Three-quarters of the apartments in the city are in my ward on either side of downtown, so this is important to us. It is important to the fabric of our neighborhoods, and it is important for the city not to be in the way of their redevelopments. We need to change our rules to make investing in these neighborhoods work. To put in perspective, if there were an earthquake tomorrow that destroyed this neighborhood, our rules make it impossible to rebuild it as it was because in the time since many of these properties were first built, we have put so many restrictions in place that it is either legally impossible to build or cost prohibitive to build. However, I don't think that means we throw everything away. We need guardrails in place to protect these neighborhoods as well. So I've worked with the mayor's office on the details of this proposal, which I encourage you all to look at very closely, please. The most important thing in my opinion is how we're proposing this is targeted. Almost all of these changes will only impact parts of the city that are already built out as multifamilies. My goal is not to change other neighborhoods, but neighborhoods that have been multifamily in some cases for over one hundred years should be empowered to remain that way. I think this balances our need to increase housing while maintaining local control and empowering local owners especially, as well as developers to build, but particularly to renovate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harder. Any further comments? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros. I just had a couple of questions real quick. As far as the tiny homes in the build, is there going to be betterment fees for that right there?
Can you repeat the question, Counselor? I'm sorry.
For like the tiny homes, things as such, are there going to be betterment fees?
Oh, so it is in the regulations that we have for the city that if we are bringing water and sewer out to a new development, that the developer does pay a better, basically the cost of us bringing the pipes out to their location. There are grant opportunities out there that the developer could take advantage of, but we do charge that as a cost of the development.
Okay. And if I may, the other question I had was, the cost of the tiny homes, I know it was somewhere like around a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, I think you said. But as I said during our committee meeting, there are cheaper options on Amazon. Are those going to be, are they subject to obviously approval of the planning board, things as such, if you wanted to go with one of those?
So for, I'm going to separate tiny homes with ADUs in the answer to that, and that for tiny homes, yes. I mean, anything is set for the dimensional requirements that are in this ordinance. So it does say the minimum size, the minimum acreage, all of that stuff. So one of the prefabbed, online versions of that that can cost between seven thousand five hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars that you want to order and just get shipped to your house that way, for an ADU, if it's under one thousand two hundred fifty or nine hundred, whatever gets passed in the ordinance in the end, if it passes, you can do that by right. If it's a tiny home, you do have to meet all those other dimensional requirements that are there set forth in the ordinance. So it's the language of this ordinance that would determine that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions or...
Yes, I'm going to agree, call for me, Mr. President. I think you're good, Counselor Brooks. Obviously, parking is going to be an issue, even these tiny homes. So you're talking a family, a small family who's just starting off, I believe. I don't know the statistics on this, but I'm sure seventy-five percent of Gardner travel to work or commute someplace else than Gardner. So even if you have a tiny home, the individual, wherever it may be, the husband or wife, they might be commuting out of town. Someone has to bring the kids to daycare. So that's two cars. I believe when we say one car, it's not feasible these days to have one car, even if it's a tiny home. It doesn't make a difference how many square foot it is. Most families have two cars. They depend on two cars, wanting to bring the kids to soccer, to school, to work, go get groceries. So that is the problem. I have no opposition on any proposal that we're doing, but it is the parking that I believe we have to take a look at and discuss that more depth on that part. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Mack?
I just want to make a comment in regards to the parking. Yeah, this ordinance does allow, if a person has an acre of land, they might not put ten houses on it. They could have a parking lot with common house, common parking. So, I mean, so there is flexibility within this to have parking, whether it's right in front of your door, it may not. But if I had an acre, I could put six or seven in and then have a parking lot that's numbered like you would at any other apartment place that we have now. For example, the Gardner News, they number the parking spots for their apartments here. The other thing, too, I think we have to keep in mind is our current residents do have cars. They do have driveways. They do have garages, but a lot of them use street parking. So I think we have to remember that we're not being strict with our current residents, because a lot of them don't use their driveway. They don't use their garage. They park on the streets. And so it would depend on what lot was being developed, that there may be street parking. And as I said, you know, they, a common lot, they could pull them out with the snow ban. Obviously, these other people, residential areas have to park, put their cars somewhere during the snow ban. They just don't choose to do so the other three hundred and fifty days a year. So I just, I don't want to see parking to become the reason why this doesn't pass, but I think people have to be open-minded that, you know, the ordinance maybe, you know, needs to clarify more options, but there are options. And it's true, not everybody does drive, especially with this, where this overlay district is. It's where a lot of people walk. They use smart transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing on item one-one-seven-oh-four closed. And with that, I will now declare closed the joint public hearing. Thank you.